Good evening. My name is Jim Brady, Tom Moderator. We have a quorum of 76 or more members present. I'd like you to please rise. We're going to say our Pledge of Allegiance and we're going to have the National Anthem sung by the middle school choral group. Please come ahead. And welcome everyone to this beautiful, beautiful auditorium. And I want to thank our host, Kerry Rigerio, the principal of the middle school here. I mean, very gracious. So we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. The flag is to your right, ladies and gentlemen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for Very nice, beautiful. Thank you so much to all of you. That's very kind. I want to thank Jess Ailing, the course director, for putting that together. It was very kind of him as well. Thank you. Please be seated. I want to introduce our town clerk, Liz Gaffney. On stage, we have Jim Johnson, our town administrator, Jim O'Neil, Chair of the Board of Selectmen, Select Board. Attorney Mark R. Reich is our town council this evening. And Doug Shea, the vice chair of the Finance Committee, is on. Oh, sorry. A number of different announcements, and I beg your indulgence, it's going to take a couple of minutes. We have some new department heads. Steve Nunnery is at the Sewer and Water Department. Is Steve here this evening? I don't know. Well, there he is. He's up there. Steve, welcome, and we are glad to have you on board. There was also a caucus this evening for Precinct 3 and Precinct 6. We didn't have anybody for Precinct 3, but for Precinct 6, Lucy McNamara was elected Town Meeting Representative. Lucy, welcome. Nice to see you. And speaking of Town Meeting Reps, I want to recognize Jean Hogan this evening. At the completion of this meeting this night, Jean will have completed her last term. She's been here for 45 years. Wonderful. There's Jean, right there. This evening, Walpole Media is carrying the coverage. It's on Comcast Channel 22 and on YouTube as well. We want to thank the volunteers, Patrick Zisk, Tamara Green, Jessica Kergo, James Connolly, and James Attilio for helping out here with the television broadcast. We have a number of resolutions that I'd like to go through, and I'm going to ask one for moments of silence. We've lost a number of people from the RTM. The first one is that resolve that we, the representative of Town Meeting members, inscribe upon the records of the Spring Annual Town Meeting of May 5, 2025, our recognition and sincere appreciation of the contribution rendered by the late Daniel J. Cunningham Jr., who passed away on June 21, 2024, as a representative of Town Meeting member from 1981 through 1982 from Precinct 7. And further, in acknowledgement of the town's loss, we request the moderator observe a moment of silence in Daniel's memory. And further, that the town clerk be instructed to send a copy of this resolution to Daniel's family. So please rise for a moment of silence for Dan Cunningham. Thank you. Resolved that we, representative of Town Meeting, inscribe upon the records of the Spring Annual Town Meeting of May 5, 2025, our recognition and sincere appreciation of the contributions rendered by the late John C. Sheehan, who passed away on February 4, 2025, as a representative of Town Meeting member from 2014 through 2015 in Precinct 6. And further, in acknowledgement of the town's loss, we request the moderator observe a moment of silence in John's memory. And further, that the town clerk be instructed to send a copy of this resolution to John's Thank you. You may wish to remain standing if you've your choice. Resolved that the representative of Town Meeting members inscribe upon the record of the Spring Annual Town Meeting of May 5, 2025, our recognition and sincere appreciation of the contributions rendered by the late Gerald F. Blair, who passed away in March 21, 2025, as representative of Town Meeting members in Precinct 7 for 30 years, from 1989 to 2019. And further, in acknowledgement of the town's loss, we request the moderator observe a moment of silence in Gerald's memory. And further, the town clerk be instructed to send a copy of this resolution to Gerald's Further resolution, that we, the representative of Town Meeting members, inscribe upon the records of the Spring Annual Town Meeting of May 5, 2025, our recognition and sincere appreciation of the contributions rendered by the late William P. Nagel Sr., who passed away on April 4, 2025, as a representative of Town Meeting member from 1976 through 1978 in Precinct 4. And further, in acknowledgement of the town's loss, we request the moderator observe a moment of silence in Bill's memory, that the town clerk be instructed to send a copy of this resolution to William's family. Thank you. It's resolved that we, the representative of Town Meeting members, inscribe upon the records of the Spring Annual Town Meeting of May 5, 2025, our recognition and sincere appreciation of the contributions rendered by the late Kenneth G. Fedig, who passed away on April 26, 2025, as a member of the Economic Development Commission from 1997 to 2022, as a member of the Sewer and Water Commission from 2006 to 2015, as a representative of Town Meeting member from 2017 through 2020 in Precinct 3. And further, in acknowledgement of the town's loss, we request the moderator observe a moment of silence in Kenneth's memory. And further, the town clerk be instructed to send a copy of this resolution to Kenneth's Thank you. Resolution that we, the representative of Town Meeting members, inscribe upon the records of the Spring Annual Town Meeting of May 5, 2025. On Sunday, March 2, 2025, the town of Walpole suffered a loss of heavy motor equipment operator Richard E. Mattson III. Mr. Mattson was a dedicated employee of the Department of Public Works for 10 years, serving the town of Walpole with commitment and care. He is survived by his wife Danielle and their sons, Declan and Keon. We extend our heartfelt recognition and sincere appreciation for Mr. Mattson's service to the residents of the town of Walpole. And further, in acknowledgement to the loss of this community, we respectfully request the moderator observe a moment of silence in Richard's memory. And further, the town clerk be instructed to send a copy of this resolution to Richard's Thank you. And finally, I would like to take a moment to acknowledge the passing of James A. Johnson III, our town administrator's father, who died on April 19. Jim's dad was Mr. Winchester, on the Select Board for 18 years, FinCom, Capital Budget, Citizen of the Year, and the list goes on. A wonderful person. Let's observe a moment of silence for Mr. Johnson. Thank you. You may be seated. Can we offer our deepest condolences? I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for staffing the door, the custodial staff here at this beautiful middle school. Al Brown, Frank Fiori, Kevin Donahue, Kevin Sullivan, Ralph Nyland. I'd like to thank our IT people, Mike Donovan, Jim Connolly, Andrew Levinson. The very hardworking people at the town, particularly our clerk, Liz Gaffney, and Assistant Administrator Patrick Shield, who have done a wonderful job helping me out getting prepared for this meeting. I also want to thank Cameron Duescher, I think that's his name, sorry, in the Building Maintenance Department for moving this nice podium up here from the high school. That was very nice of them. Seating, I think you know the rules. If you're an RTM, you're down front, in front of the row. If you're not an RTM, you're in the rear. If you'd like to make a comment, please queue up in the microphones here on either side. And if you're going to be presenting, there's a microphone down here for you to present. The comments go through the moderators, you know. If you're speaking on the article, we've had a three-minute rule, but I'm a little lax on that. So if you have something new to add, please add it. If you have something against to repeat, we probably will go move on to somebody else. Tellers this evening, on my left, this section here is Ed Forsberg and Bill O'Connell, in the center, Mark Gallivan and Brian Connor, and on the right, my right, Chandler Sullivan and Katie Turco Abadi. If there's a, if I can't call the vote, we'll do a standing vote as we typically do. I usually have some comments, I'm going to refrain from those who you've heard before. We were going to have Congressman Stephen Lynch speak this evening. I don't know, is the congressman here, or is anybody from the staff? I guess not. So we will not be hearing from Stephen Lynch. I have a couple of little announcements I want to make. Walpole Day is on this Saturday, May 10. It's a great time for everyone. Candidates Night is being hosted by the League of Women Voters. It's on Monday, May 12, at 7:00 p.m. in the Community Room at the Walpole Public Library. There are contested seats for Select Board, Assessor, and Precincts 2 and 3. So that's the Candidates Night, May 12. And also, the town election is being held on Tuesday, May 20. The polls are open from 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. I have a preliminary motion that from the Finance Committee to waive the reading of the warrant requires a simple majority vote. All those in favor? Opposed? It is a vote. I have another preliminary motion to the Finance Committee, that all motions of the Finance Committee be made, be made the main motion. This also requires a simple majority vote. All those in favor? Opposed? It is a vote. We're going to move to the consent agenda. We sent these out last week. Rules provide for the moderator to make use of a consent agenda comprised of articles which generate no apparent controversy and could be properly voted on as one unit without debate. The consent agenda with the articles, numbers, and voted were emailed to you, as I mentioned. If you have any objection to these, please let me know. We'll hold it, and we can discuss the articles as we get there. I am going to, and this is not by any way in kind of coercion, but if we're close on votes, I'm going to, and my practice has been to try to declare unanimous votes. It makes it much easier for the clerk down the road. But if you wanted a consent on the vote, by all means do so. So, Mr. Gallivan?
I wanted to hold Article 7.
Article 7 is going to be held on the consent agenda. Okay. Article 2, are there any holds on Article 2? This is a fiscal year 25 budget adjustment on paid bills on snow and ice, favorable action by the FinCom 1300. Article 4, Sewer and Water, fiscal year budgets, FinCom voted, no action, 1300. Article 6, Walpole Media budget, FinCom voted, 1300. It's a sanitary budget. Article 7, I'm sorry, hold, Mr. O'Leary? Okay. Article 6 is being held by Mr. O'Leary. And Mr. Gallivan holds number 7. Article 9, street acceptances. Any questions on Article 9, or any holds on Article 9? There being none. So Articles 2, 4, and 9 are by consent. This requires a simple majority vote. All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed? It is a vote. Article 2 on consent, we're going to go to Article 3, which is the budgets. Before I go there, Article 1, sorry. Article 1 is a general article which we have at every town meeting. The article remains open throughout the town meeting. In Article 1, it is moved that the town here enact on any report of any committee who choose to report to the town meeting. And this article will remain open during the course of the town meeting. It will close upon a motion to dissolve. Is there any committee or board that would like to report to the town meeting at this point in time? There being none, we'll move to Article 3, which are the budgets. Article 2 is by consent. The budgets require a majority vote, as you all know. The total budget for the town of Walpole is $124,843,890. Should be $891. They did not include $1 for the moderator budget, as you noticed. And there was a discussion on this. Only kidding. Okay. I think what we'll do is, instead of reading every single line item, I'm going to go to the categories. And in the booklet that you received in the mail, you'll see there's a black line that goes all the way across the booklet. So I'll be reading that number to the far right. So the first one would be on the, and I'm referencing these, of course. The first one would be on page 3 of the budgets, sorry, page 5 of the budgets, 5 of the budgets, which is the total government, total general government. And that number is $6,393,145. Does anyone wish to hold anything on total general government? Mr. O'Leary? Speak up, please. Select Board, you want to hold that? Okay. Well, you want, let's talk about it now. You want to talk about it? Okay. Come on up to the mic, please, if you would. Select Board is narrow 01122. It's on page 1.
Do you, Mr. Moderator? Could someone explain the increase? What, is it just raises, or is it additional person?
Thank you. Mr. O'Neil or Mr. Johnson?
Can you hear me? Okay.
Mr. Johnson?
The increase is actually subject, I think you're talking about, on the personnel side, it goes from about 46,000 to 50,000.
Yes.
That's reflected in the COLAs and the step increase for that person in the position. And then there's also a slight bump of $2,000 in the miscellaneous expenses. Most of that can be attributed to professional and technical line, which we budgeted a little bit more in there because our office has taken on the administration of the building of the high school there. So I figure we bump that up.
It's basically pay raises for a person within the Blackboard Office.
Thank you, Mr. O'Leary. Do you release the hold? He releases the hold. I want to go back to things. I forgot to ask, does the clerk attest to the return of the warrant?
I do.
Yeah, she does. Okay, that's technically. And also, the consent agenda, we did vote that. That was unanimous vote. Thank you. Okay. You're all set, Mr. O'Leary? Okay, good. General Government. We next move to total public safety on page 6. That is $14,799,479. Does anybody have any questions or holds with regard to total public safety? Mr. O'Leary has a question on the fire department, and that is number 01220 on page 5.
My question refers to the personnel line. Could, through you, Mr. Moderator, could someone explain the increase in that figure?
Mr. Johnson?
Sure. Most of that's attributed to, we're in the final year of a three-year contract with the Walpole firefighters, which town meeting and wrote it to approve just some time ago. That final year, I believe it's about a 5% increase. It went, I think in my head, it was 3, 4, 5, and they wanted to push that final 5% off there, so most of that attributed to that.
The way the contract was set up, so is there any additional people involved with that? Is there an increase in the number of firefighters? The same number of firefighters receiving just their raise?
Mr. Moderator, agree?
Yes.
So right now, we're not looking to add to our current firefighter situation. This will continue to allow for three groups of 12, one group of 11. And there's some vacancies in those positions right now, but it's more or less, we're not looking to add additional spots for that.
Thank you. You release, Mr. O'Leary releases the hold on the fire department. The next category is total public education on page 7. That is a number of $60,664,945 for public education. Anybody have a hold, questions, or comments on public education? There being none, we'll move to the next major category, which is total public works on page 8. Total public works, the budget allocated is $6,230,790. Questions or comments with regard to public works? There being none. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. O'Leary.
Just a question to you, Mr. Moderator.
Sure.
EPW Traffic Control, could someone explain what that relates to?
Mr. Johnson?
That actually specifically relates to the streetlights. In town, you may have noticed over the last two or so years, we've transitioned from the regular old-fashioned lighting to the LED lights, which has saved a significant amount of funds. That's why you'll see that budget go down there.
Okay, thank you.
Do you release your hold? Mr. O'Leary, this is the hold. Okay. We move on from public education to total health and human services. That budget amount is $895,333. Questions and comments with regard to total health and human services budget? There being none. Next category is total culture and recreation, $2,202,411. Questions and comments on total culture and recreation?
Hi, Sarah Katib, Precinct 8. I have a question about the five-year capital plan. Can I ask at this point?
Sure.
Okay. I noticed there's several investments in Blackburn Hall. I'm wondering where I could get more information on that. I believe there was some mention in a facility study, but I'm just wondering if there's any better source for what's been planned.
Mr. Johnson?
So in terms of the five-year capital plan, Sarah, we can certainly share that with you. I know we have posted on the website, and this is for future five-year plans. But if you're talking in terms of improvements made to the building in recent years, if you've been into voting that building, we recently, when transitioning between Don Anderson and Kim, we put new floors down upstairs in the higher, the upper auditorium and downstairs. We renovated both of the bathrooms and the floors over in that section over there. There is a plan in place, and I'm pretty sure it's online. If it isn't, we'll get it up tomorrow morning for the phasing end of the five-year plan of that specific building and the pool improvement that needs to be made to keep the pools up and running and functioning.
Okay, yeah, I'll look for it, but if it's not there, you can post it. One other question. So the actual pages of the five-year plan were not included in the warrant booklet? I was just wondering why.
Mr. Johnson?
So if you, the QR codes, it's on there. And one of the things that we were trying to reduce a little bit there is save on the printing cost for this, because if you notice, this one's pretty thick with all the zoning there. So Moderator and Select Board would like us to include that again. We certainly will. We're just trying to cut down on the page.
Personally, I would like them included. I thought we voted in town meeting that we weren't going to reduce the warrant, and we weren't going to, you know, go to a QR code. So I was surprised that I had to print out page.
Sure. Mr. Johnson?
The Charter specifically states the warrant, which is this booklet here, shall be published by the Finance Committee with a report and a finding. So we're going above and beyond with what it specifically says in the Charter. So what was being considered last year was to simply, we were going to go to a postcard and, you know, here's the warrant, find it online. So we are going above and beyond what's required here, but I don't see an issue with including the five-year plan in there.
Did you release your holds?
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. That was, those were questions were directed on the total culture and recreation. The next item is the total assessment infringe benefits. This is for $25,860,661. Question. Ms. McNamara, our new RTM from Precinct 6. Point of order, please raise, stand and raise your point of order. I did? I'm sorry. She said I missed total debt and interest. Where is it? Page 11, sorry. I'm sorry. Yep, you're right. Good point. Oh, who wants to be bothered with debt anyways, huh? What the hell? Yeah, I didn't flip the page on that one. Sorry about that. All right, let's go back to total debt and interest. Total debt and interest, $7,797,126. Questions and comments, or any holds on total debt and interest? There being none, we'll move forward. Thank you for catching that. Total assessments infringe benefits, $25,860,661. Ms. McNamara has a question.
Looking at item 0191, no, 01914, which is fringe benefits, it's a change of $1,200,000 more or less in a year. I just wondered what is considered a fringe benefit?
Mr. Johnson?
So the fringe benefits line consists of our health insurance, our dental insurance, the small life insurance we add there, so that's what our fringe benefits are. And so what we did at the beginning of this, back in January, February, we worked with our insurance company, Maya, who provides this Blue Cross Blue Shield Health Insurance, and they came at a 14% increase. We successfully worked with our collective bargaining groups on the school and town side to increase the duck bowls and co-pays just a little bit, and we were able to reduce that increase down from 14% to 10%. Actually, to toot my own horn, Maya came back at me about a month ago and said, you're the only town that we cover that was able to get that done so quickly. And I like to attribute that to a great Select Board and a great relationship we have with our collective bargaining union.
I appreciate your efforts. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you release your hold? Yes, she releases her holds. Thank you. Therefore, the total overall budget, are there any other questions or any other holds on any part of the budget whatsoever? If you want to go back, I'm happy to do it.
This is regarding the revenue, which is going to come from different sources. To moderate time, I would like to ask, the $1.6 million, which is coming from Water Enterprise Fund?
Can you, sorry, what number are we on?
Article 3, the revenue.
Got it. Sorry, sorry. Go ahead. Yep.
So $1.6 million, which is coming from Water Enterprise Fund, and $617,000 from sewer. I'd like to know whether it's indirect cost or is it some kind of other budget item through you, moderator?
Mr. Johnson?
I wasn't completely clear on that. I heard Mr. Mishra would like it audited, the indirect cost, is that?
Can you clarify, what are these items? It says Water Enterprise Fund and Sewer Enterprise Fund?
That is the indirect costs.
Indirect, yes. I just want to clarify that. Okay. So the $1.6 million from the Water Enterprise Fund is almost 25% of the water budget, which is on Article 5, that's correct? Through you, moderator?
Yep, yes, yes. Mr. Johnson?
Is that a question or a statement?
That's a question.
So it is. Actually, in total, it's So, it is. Actually, in total, it's two million, two hundred and thirty-five thousand, sixty-eight dollars with that split between sewer and water. Earlier today, Mr. Mishra, you had reached out to me at about ten-thirty this morning and asked for a clarification on specifically the sewer and water indirect costs. I believe I went back and I pulled all the minutes for you. I specifically noted the time and date where the commissioners voted on the budget, and I explained to you what indirect costs were, where we came from with that. If you recall, on, in August, August tenth, two thousand two, two thousand twenty-two, you were presented with a report from the Pioneer Institute. They explained what the indirect costs were. They actually provided suggestions with changes to that. From what I recall, you participated in that. So, that is what indirect cost is, and we have audited that in the last three years, and we've, we've stayed consistent with that.
Through, through you, moderator.
Yes.
Indirect cost has gone up from twenty percent to twenty-five percent in this year, so I just wanted to raise that one second here.
Okay, thank you. Did you release your, your hold on that? Thank you, sir. Therefore, we're going to vote, vote on the total budget. Oh, sorry, Mr. O'Leary.
John O'Leary, Precinct Three. I'm looking for a clarification. I'm looking at the warrant and the Finance Committee, Section Article Three, and it lists the budget, one hundred and twenty-four plus for the town. And then it has items for where the appropriation is coming from, but they don't add up anywhere near what the budget, is there a typo here somewhere maybe?
Mr. Johnson?
No, I believe the, the motion that you sent out, I, I can't specifically speak to that because I have a couple of pages open here, but I am, we, the, the motion that Moderator Brady has presented to town meeting has been vetted and that's the motion. I don't know what Finance Committee, unless, I, I didn't write that.
I'm looking at a figure. Well, appropriation from taxation, one million, three hundred and fifty-four thousand, seven thirty-one. And like, that's typically the majority of the budget source. So, I'm not sure if there's a typo somewhere of that.
Mr. O'Leary, just give them one second. I think they're going to figure it out. Are you talking about the article that was printed in the warrant, the, the one that?
Yes, the one the Finance Committee.
Okay, I just want to make sure I'm on the same page.
Yep. I don't know if there's another portion somewhere else I'm not seeing that shows the source.
So, you know, Mr. O'Leary, what I have in my book, what I was, which is signed by the Finance Committee chairperson, and what is published in the warrant match exactly from what I have, from, from, from the numbers that were given to me. Mr. Shea? You need to hit your microphone, I think.
That work?
Yep.
I believe these were just select numbers. It was not the whole appropriation. It's just select items from the budget, some of the appropriations.
This is just select items, it's not the total, okay? Where would I look to find the, a total for where the sources are coming from?
Yeah, I'm, I'm being informed that they're in the motions that were sent out to the town meeting members.
This one here?
Mr. Johnson?
So, if I could clarify this. I checked with town council over here. We have three different pages up. The numbers match up, one twenty-four, eight forty-three, eight ninety. I think Mr. O'Leary, Bear O'Neill, just pointed out, again, I didn't write this letter. It was, I'm not throwing Bear Crowley under the bus, but we're, he's missing one, one hundred and twenty million, three hundred and fifty-four thousand, seven thirty-one. He didn't specifically, he, he just broke out the other sources. He didn't break out the amount from taxation.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. O'Leary, are you satisfied? You release any holds? Thank you, sir. Therefore, we're voting now, which requires a simple majority vote, is the total budget for the town of Walpole, Massachusetts of one hundred and twenty-four million, eight hundred and forty-three thousand, eight hundred and ninety dollars. This requires a simple majority vote. All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed? It is a unanimous vote. Oh, sorry, one dissent. It is a, it is a vote. It's a majority vote. Thank you. We're moving on to Article. Article four is on the consent agenda, which was passed. We're moving to Article Five. Article Five is an article that has two motions within it. We can take it, we'll take each motion individually. We're going to take the first motion up, we'll vote it, then we'll take the second motion up, and we'll do it that way. Article Five is a petition of the Sewer and Water Commissioner. It's a the Board of Select, excuse me, FinCom, please have this, give us the vote, please.
Article Five was favorable action thirteen, zero, zero.
Mr. O'Neill, Select Board.
Select Board, favorable action five, zero, zero.
And Sewer and Water, who's going to be speaking to this issue? I believe Mr. Hassan Jaeger.
Hassan Jaeger, Chairman Sewer and Water. The two Article Fives that were sent out, the votes were split between the, this is co-mingled essentially. It should be bifurcated into Sewer and Water. The water vote was two, one, zero, and the sewer vote was three, zero, zero.
Um, Mr. Hassan Jaeger, that water vote was for the, for the first motion, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
And what, and the mail document, you have two Article Fives in the document you gave out this evening. You have a four and a five.
Yeah, thank you.
But the votes were taken.
Okay. Mr. Hassan, does anyone in which to speak to this article? Mr. Hassan, Sewer and Water folks? Oh, okay. Question, comments with regard to Article Five, the first motion in Article Five. Any questions and comments with regard to that? There being none, requires a simple majority vote. All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed? One, one opposition. It is, it is, it is a majority vote. Article, the second motion within Article Five, questions and comments with regard to the same. There being none, this requires a simple majority vote. All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed? One. It is a majority vote. We move to Article Six. This article was on a consent agenda. It was held by Mr. O'Leary, I believe. It is, yes, it is a article with regards to the Walpole Media Budget. FinCom vote, please.
It voted favorable action thirteen, zero, zero.
Mr. O'Neill, Select Board.
Select Board voted favorable action five, zero, zero.
Thank you. Mr. O'Leary.
John O'Leary, Precinct Three. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My question's more, the question was raised to me earlier today. Why is the town funding this? And I just wanted some clarification, because they mentioned in here that it's the private organization and they do all their funding through revenue raised. I wanted to clarify whether this is an instance where the funding is coming in to the Walpole Town Hall budgets and then we're reimbursing them out of money that's already been collected. Is that the instance?
Certainly. Mr. Johnson?
So, essentially, yes. We started this back in two thousand fifteen, Walpole, I think it was Walpole Cable. Closed up shop, and they formed a new company called Walpole Media Corp. As part of that agreement, the fund, the town takes in the money each year, each quarter, actually. It's about somewhere between sixty and seventy thousand per quarter we receive from Verizon and also sixty or seventy thousand we receive from Comcast. Each year, we take that in, and then it comes to town meeting. They have to explain their, you know, they provide you with a budget request. They go to FinCom, go through why they're requesting what they're requesting, and then town meeting appropriates that money out. So, the town's not holding, holding it permanently. We are giving it back out. And in fact, it was four hundred thousand just this past town meeting. It was used as a funding source for part of the high school project that went directly towards expanding and updating the Walpole Media Corp cable studio there.
Okay, and I also appreciate the fact that there was some breakdown in the, you know, the handouts also that helped explain where their costs go. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Leary. Thank you. Further questions and comments with regard to Article Six? There being none. Article Six requires a simple majority vote. All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed? It is a majority vote. Article Seven was held by Mr. Gallivan. This is an article with regard to the prudent investor rule. Vote of the Finance Committee, please. Mr. Shea?
Finance Committee voted favorable action thirteen, zero, zero.
Vote of the Select Board, Mr. O'Neill.
Select Board voted favorable action five, zero, zero.
Thank you. Mr. Gallivan?
Yeah, I held this article so John Sheehan, who's on the investment committee, can speak to it for a moment.
Certainly. Mr. Sheehan?
Either way, you can use either one.
Yeah, John, if you want to come up this way, me, address the body. Nice to see you, John. John, you're going to hit the little, there's a button down there. See that, right below the tape? On the microphone, right at the base of the mic.
Got a green light.
Here you go.
Thank you for having me. Article Seven has to do with the prudential, excuse me, prudent investment rule, which affects the Trust Fund Commission and the town treasurer, Lisa Sinkus. Lisa and myself and the other trust members, trust fund commission members, jointly petition to have the selectmen put this, this article before you. First off, in, in bringing a proposition to town meeting is to stop at Finance Committee and anybody who's been a petitioner and had to address the Finance Committee, you realize it's a pretty scary proposition. Happily to report, we were warmly received and their chairman predicted very ably summarized what our feelings were about the upcoming article. Talking to Mr. Gallivan tonight, he said, do you want to hold this? Do you want to speak to this? And I thought I might, because nobody knows who we are or what we do, and where we came from. It won't take long. The Trust Fund Commission was appointed by the select board. What we do is we manage the private funds that come into the town. The private funds come in typically through a will or a request. The library asked us to invest their money. We have that at the fund. When they want it back, we give it back to them. Other than that, we follow the dictates of the grand tour. It's mostly scholarships. But it also includes the master plan funding mechanism known as the Kendall Fund. And probably the best known, though not well-known, is the Emergency Medical Aid Fund, which was granted to us by Philip Allen, who in nineteen forty was the president of Burden Company. He was very generous and very, very able executive and force with a great deal of foresight as to what was ahead of us. The Trust Fund Commission is a fiduciary. Currently, we manage about twelve million dollars. On Lisa's side of things, she handles the cemetery and, and other trust funds, and she has about a million seven. Before I move on, the other commissioners are Lisa, excuse me, Kate Hinton and Lorraine Dunn. Kate and Lorraine and myself, who are here. And they are former chairman of the Emergency Medical Aid Committee. They're the people that, that actually spend the money, handle a request for support. And they are now, having done three years each, have now moved up and are handling the financial part of it in policy. The history of this goes back to nineteen thirty-seven. Nineteen thirty-seven, it was enabling legislation by the legislature to create such body. Town meeting that year in Walpole accepted the terms of the enabling legislation, and here we are. And we've been operating at a sin. In nineteen thirty-seven, it was kind of a middle year, nineteen, the big crash of the, of the stock market was nineteen twenty-nine. The war started in nineteen forty-one, and we're in the middle of the Great Depression. There's the background. The legislature decided to authorize the creation of, of us to handle these things, but there was safeguard. And what they asked us to do, or asked the banking commissioner to do, is to set up guidelines that we could operate within, and they gave us what has been known ever since as the legal list. And the sense of things was invest the money, but don't lose any money. Well, I can honestly report that we have never lost any money. Here comes the problem. How do you make money? And adhering to the to the banking commissioner's legal list, we have been getting returns of about two and a half to three percent. We think three percent is like home run. But what does that relate? It's in a, in an atmosphere where inflation's been running over five percent. The money is being used primarily for scholarships of, which are with tuitions in excess of fifty thousand dollars. And the school committee is now allowed with these grand sums that we're making to make scholarships of a thousand, maybe up to two thousand. They know what they're doing. They do a great job. We just don't have the money to give them to make these awards. The best known of our accounts is the Emergency Medical Aid. The principal balance on that is a million, eight fifty-three. Last year, we earned fifty-two thousand, nine hundred and fifty-seven dollars, or two point nine percent. And the reason we were able to make that vast sum of money was because of bonds. We had never been in bonds before. That's kind of a, I see it as a losing proposition. They pay a pretty good interest rate, but the capital is the same. There was a window where we could get bonds paying five, six, and seven percent. Problem, bonds that were available are callable bonds, which means that at any time, they can give us back our money and close us up. So, we were pushing that two point nine percent and considered ourselves fat cats. We were doing really great. This doesn't work. All right. It won't work. We have never denied a legitimate request. We've never lost any money. This year, the final numbers aren't in, but I know we're going, we're going under. And the principal reason for that is, well, many, one is demographic. The population is getting older, so we have more and more people with less and less money. We have people who are physically not able to avail themselves of health needs, particularly dental. If they're on Medicare, Medicare does not cover them. We could predict pretty well what the cost of a root canal, like, a crown might be. a crown might be. But what we've found in just the last few months is three very large bills. And it's really, the crown doesn't work. You have to rebuild them out. And one of those requests for about ninety-nine hundred dollars. We only have fifty-two. So it only goes so far. We're petitioning body tonight to allow us to get out from underneath the guardrails that are put before us by the Banking Commission.
Thank you, John. John, is there a, are you, I take it you're in favor of this, this article?
I've got about a minute.
Okay, all right.
The legislature has recognized that this is an issue, and it's affecting all of our investing units across the Commonwealth. They have asked a permanent, permanent investment rule that gives us a great deal more flexibility. It's a useful tool to us, and we think it'll go somewhere in helping us resolve those we recognize problems. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Thank you for a very thorough explanation as well. I think that helped a lot of people. So Article six, excuse me, Article seven is the prudent investor rule. And did we, we all do the votes? Did you give me the votes? No. Mr. Shea.
Finance Committee voted favorable action thirteen zero zero.
Thank you. Mr. O'Neil, Select Board.
Board voted favorable action five zero zero.
Are there questions or comments with regard to Article seven? Mr. Damish.
Damish, Precinct Seven. Three, Mr. Moderator, I'd like to know what the new guidelines are and what sort of instruments we're talking about investing in.
Okay.
Mostly about risk, like, you know what the risk is, risk, risk reward.
Mr. Johnson, do you have that information? Mr. Mr. Sheehan, do you have that information? The question is, what are the new guidelines? Are you familiar with the new guidelines? Correct, Mr. Damish? Yeah.
Very briefly. Anything the state does is quite voluminous, but the gist of it is in section three of their new law, two oh three C. And it's talking about a trustee being of good character, a trustee understanding the current economic conditions, the tax consequences, appreciation of capital, and return on investment.
Mr. Damish.
Sounds like we're taking on more risk than usual. Is that correct?
Mr. Sheehan, do you wish, I'm sorry.
It's taking on more risk than we had been previously allowed, which was no risk at all.
So there's a chance of losing money then, down the road. There is a chance.
Is there a chance of losing money?
Yeah, I mean, the guidelines before were set up, never to lose money. It sounds like they were a very stable instrument. Like government bonds is what I heard, mostly. So what, can you invest in stocks? Can you invest in call options? But I'm just curious what the risk.
Mr. Sheehan.
Let me answer that a little bit differently. I have my own portfolio. I have my own IRA. I understand growth stock. I have about half of my my investments are in growth funds. You know, the map. So forth. The other half of what I have are in value funds. And that would be companies like Procter Campbell. It might be Goodyear Tire and Rubber, that have been around forever. They're quite solid. What what growth funds won't do for us, that won't spin off any money, they'll grow. I'll buy some more Apple, but Apple doesn't pay any dividends, because we won't be there. And the value sector will probably be there, no question. We have some homework to do. But we're now being allowed to do it, well, with your vote, we'll be allowed to do it. We want to be in valued funds that are spinning off some money, some cash.
Mr. Damish, Mr. Johnson had a comment at one point, which may be enlightening.
So Treasurer Collector Lisa Sinkus is here next to me. She reminded me that this will allow for more diversification for a full breadth market. It also allows for the full U.S. stock market sector exposure for both stock and bonds. Our entire capitalization and investments will basically, as you said, is a small risk. It actually, according to Lisa, and I know the Trust Fund Commissioners have really researched, it's over thirty or forty years of view in fact, I think, say nineteen forty's or forty-one or something like that, so.
Nineteen thirty-six, he said.
You were in high school.
I used to like you there, Johnson.
So it allows for a more long-term investment strategy with Johnson. But I want to remind you that the town has approximately twelve million dollars. These funds managed by the commissioners, along with one point six million in summer dairy and other funds, trust funds managed by Lisa. We don't put our stabilization funds or our free cash in there. It's just basically for that thirteen point six.
I just thought the body should hear exactly what the new portfolio looked like.
Yeah, I think Mr. Damish was trying to raise the issue that there is potential of more risk here, and I think the body does get that, so. Other questions and comments with regard to Article seven? There being none. This requires a simple majority vote. All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed, it is a unanimous vote. Thank you, Mr. Sheehan. Thank you, Mr. Damish. Article eight is regularly moved. The town authorized the Select Board to file with the General Court a home rule petition for special legislation in the form to set forth the warrant for, to issue two non-transferable restricted additional licenses of the sale of alcoholic beverages. Mr. Shea, Finance Committee vote, please.
Finance Committee voted favorable action thirteen zero zero.
Mr. O'Neil, Select Board.
Select Board voted favorable action four one zero.
Questions and comments with regard to Article eight? Sorry, sir, the RTM first. Are you a RTM? No, you can speak, later. I'll, I'll get to you. Yeah, in order for you to speak, we have to have somebody, have, some, RTM has to sponsor you to give you some time, but I'm sure that somebody will. Ms. McNamara, please.
Lucy McNamara, sixteen Clear Pond Drive. Looking at the number of liquor stores and wine malt stores we have here, combined, there are either twelve or six, or a range of six to twelve. And I'm just wondering how many more we actually need in this town, especially this would be the Central Business District, which I think includes Turning Point, the recovery clinic. So I just sort of see a juxtaposition of those things. First of all, the number of establishments we already have and businesses that would like to flourish. And also, the business district includes something that may find an alcohol establishment, which, by the way, it's particularly one where you cannot drink on the premises, which is why I'm saying a liquor store. Why that would be a desirable thing. So I just wanted to hear what the, besides the fact that we need to move this forward so that we have more opportunity for growth before twenty thirty, I just wanted to know more about the decision to consider this.
Certainly. Mr. O'Neil, Select Board.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and through you. This article is proposing to add two additional package store liquor licenses, and there are two kinds, so it'll be one of each. One is an all-alcoholic beverage license. The second one is a wine and malt beverage license. We currently don't have any liquor stores of these types in the Central Business District. And given the growth that we're seeing in the downtown area, and especially a lot of the residential development, and our view that this might be helpful when it comes to economic development, we thought it'd be help, we thought it would be smart to petition the legislature for one of each, specifically for the Central Business District. We currently have six of each, spread all through the town. And this would add two more if the legislature, if this body votes it and if the legislature approves it. And they would be required to be in the Central Business District, so they would not be allowed to be anywhere else in town, just in the Central Business District. We asked Economic Development for their input on this. They voted favorable action on this as well. And so we see it as an opportunity to grow the downtown, bring economic development in the downtown in a, in a way to solve a problem, meaning that there are, there was, there were, neither of these exist in the downtown CBD today.
So in a way, all those buildings that have been built with their first floor for businesses, which are unoccupied right now, this could move into one of those spaces?
Certainly. And I will tell you, the impetus behind this was that we've actually been approached by a few people who have said, you know, they've noted that we don't have any of either of these types of establishments in the downtown, and it's suggested that perhaps it'd be a good idea to do that. That's why the Select Board brought this forward, is we think it's an opportunity, given all the development, including those empty storefronts that we see downtown right now, it'd be a good opportunity for us to economically grow the downtown.
Thank you for the information.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I removed the whole.
Thank you.
Hi, Mr. Moderator. Liz Barrows, Precinct One. I just wanted a little bit of clarification on, because I don't know how the process works. The verbiage in the packet that was sent by the town administrator was different than the Finance Committee book. And I just wanted clarification. It stated that based upon our twenty twenty census, we had the additional two licenses. And they were quickly applied for at that time, but we, was it that the Select Board never granted those, and we were just, just now deciding to issue those? Or I guess clarification on that. And then there was a statement about, you know, if we don't do this now, then we have to wait to twenty thirty. Unless we, you know, go through what was the statement?
Through the legislative process.
Yeah, so what would, so would it essentially be going through this process right now? So theoretically, we could, next, next town meeting, you could petition the legislature and, okay, so, okay.
Mr. O'Neil, please.
So let me take the, the last part of that, because I can't remember the first part. So, and you'll remind me in a minute. But, but yes, the process we're talking about right now is a process that we could do in any town meeting. We could put another article on and petition to get licenses through the legislature, so we could do that. You note the twenty thirty census. What happened on the twenty twenty census was the population went up a certain amount, and we got two additional, one of each, licenses. That brought us to a total of six, so six of each, so twelve in total. So we had four and four, we, I'm sorry, we had five and five, we had two more, one and one, it gets to twelve now across the board, six and six. And so that wouldn't happen again until twenty thirty unless this body decided to step in and petition the legislature. So that's what we're doing. And I think I did answer the first half of your question.
So these other two you've had since twenty twenty, I guess my question is?
They've been granted.
The, they've already been granted?
They've been granted.
Okay.
We have six of each.
You have six now, okay.
Twelve in total.
Okay.
We don't have any sitting on the shelf.
Okay, um, okay, so that explains it. And the, what's the process for determining who gets it?
So there's an application process that is well laid out, driven by the state. The ABCC runs it. And people can apply, and they have to go through a big process of vetting, and depending on how that goes, then we make a decision to award, so.
And it's not like a applicant, is there, can there be multiple, multiple applicants, and then you just choose which one is best?
We'd look at the one that is best suited to fill the need, right?
Thank you, Ms. Barrows. There's a gentleman that is not an RTM that wishes to speak to the body. He needs to be sponsored by an RTM. Yes, sir. Yeah, he'll sponsor. Yeah, thank you, Glenn. Come down and just identify yourself, you'd be kind enough, please, state your name and your address.
Hi, Matt Keveney, forty-eight High Street in Walpole, which I think is Precinct Seven.
Welcome, Matt.
Thanks for letting me speak. Appreciate the sponsorship. I just, I guess, have, Mr. Moderator, concerns about adding more liquor stores to the town, particularly in the center of town, especially two liquor stores right in the center of town. I guess, similar to the question or comments raised earlier, you know, the liquor stores we have now seem to be meeting the consumer demand. There's not long lines, they're never crowded. They have everything you could ever want, and they're all a short drive from downtown. Some are even walkable or bikeable. I just feel like there'd be a better opportunity to have different businesses or a different atmosphere presentable to like restaurants or other places, even if people want to consume alcohol, could purchase it in a more recreational way. I guess my question is, was there a study done on the economic demands of alcohol with the growing census? And is there a reason we could not just add one or wait till twenty thirty, since it seems like the people of Walpole can get alcohol where they want currently?
Mr. O'Neil?
We have not done a study. We are simply reacting to the requests that we got from multiple people, seeing that there are no liquor stores of any kind in the CBD.
Okay. Like, Mr. Moderator, how many people would justify opening a liquor store, you know, to like maintain its business?
I would say again that the Economic Development Commission also did opine on this and voted favorable action on it.
Okay, okay. Thank you. You're welcome. Yeah, thank you for participating. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
There's an opening in Precinct, I think about three, by the way, if you're interested. Oh, you're not in three? Okay. Liz tells me everything. Okay. Mr. Hamilton, question?
Hamilton, Precinct Five. I recall several liquor stores in the Central Business District. They were allowed to move out. Will these licenses be only allowed in the Central District?
Mr. O'Neil, these are restricted to the Central Business District and are non-transferable.
They have a value. Someone who has one can't sell it to someone outside the Central District?
No, the, the specific warrant article that's ahead, that's in front of you tonight prohibits that.
I rise against it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hamilton. Further questions and comments with regard to Article eight? There being none. Requires a simple majority vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it is a majority vote. Article nine was on the consent agenda. We're moving to Article ten. Articles ten through sixteen are all zoning articles. They'll require a two-thirds vote of the town meeting. First article is moved with regard to the flood plain protection overlay district. Mr. Shea, Finance Committee vote, please.
Finance Committee voted favorable action eleven zero three.
Mr. O'Neil, Select person.
Select Board voted favorable action five zero zero.
Planning Board, Mr. O'Leary will be speaking for the Planning Board this evening as the Vice Chair of the Planning Board. Mr. O'Leary, what was the vote of the Planning Board, please?
Article ten, vote was five zero zero, favorable action.
Thank you, Mr. O'Leary. Yes, you wish to speak to this?
I'd like to speak to the articles in general.
Certainly. Mr. O'Leary, do you want to come over here? It might be a little easier, because I think that's a better microphone. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is John O'Leary. I'm on the Planning Board. I'm also one of the members of the Bylaw Review Committee that's in process of looking at all our zoning bylaws and seeing where they can be updated, edited to be more understandable and altered when necessary. and altered when necessary. We've been at this now for about over six months, I think. These articles are our first few, this is not a finished project. We've gone through the portions of these zoning bylaws that we think are the least significant, not significant, but least arguable. Most of these changes are in the nature of cleaning them up to make them more understandable and to make them more in line with what the state regulations are requiring us to do. The zoning bylaws have like 14 sections. What we're looking at here is about six plus inserts and a couple others. So we've just basically opened the door, we're looking at the front half of the bylaws, so we can put the basis around everything else that we'll be doing in the fall and probably into the next spring also. There are five or six members of the committee, some from planning, some from other departments within Town Hall, and some outside representatives of the town. And we're, we have the Economic Development Supervisor kind of coordinating everything for us. If you have questions on anything we're doing tonight, or suggestions for anything within the bylaws that we'll be going over, we meet roughly once a month, please feel free to forward those to the Planning Board or the, or Pat Duchesne, the Economic Development Officer. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Leary. The town administrator mentioned to me having perhaps the Building Commissioner, Jim Cameron, and the, and the community development person, Patrick Duchesne, speak to, speak to these as a, as a whole. Are you okay with that, Mr. O'Leary? I think it might make sense, it might enlighten the body a little bit. So let's have the Building Commissioner come up and give some comments with regard to, or Pat, okay, you're going to do first, comments with regard to the package, because it's the ever-so-popular zoning issues between Articles Ten and Sixteen, we all love this.
I figured.
There was a dentist available outside, by the way. But I want you to try to enlighten us a little bit about these articles, please.
No, yeah, and thank you to John O'Leary for providing that explanation. So, really, the project started last winter, we were able to receive grant funding through the state to conduct a zoning revision and rewrite process. As towns kind of, you know, go through changes and new zoning gets added, zoning gets taken out, your bylaws just need updating. They need revision, they need to remove inconsistencies, provide better clarity, make sure you're updated with current state regulations, and just overall take a general relook at each section individually to make sure that it's, it's clear, it's concise, and it's meeting the needs of the town currently. So, in that process, we have a legal consultant, we end up using KP Law as our, our legal consultant, and so it starts with a, a legal audit, and then followed by a zoning diagnostic. So, the town council that we worked with took a really in-depth look at everything, just pointing out the major issues, and then would go line by line, providing certain recommendations. So, what, what John O'Leary noted too is that we meet monthly to kind of go over a new, a new set of proposed amendments, and to really kind of determine whether or not we agree with some of the recommendations from Town Council, if we find additional concerns, we'll bring those up. So, what's really before you tonight? Two of them, I would say Article Ten and Article Sixteen are more dictated by current changes in, in state regulation, whereas Articles Eleven through Fifteen are more or less, I wouldn't say cleanup changes, but they really are trying to take a look at more or less things as formatting and, and just making sure that they're revised, clear, in compliance of state law. But happy to answer any questions, of course.
Thank you for that explanation. Point of order. Why don't you go to the mic, please? Thank you.
Trudeau, Precinct Four, member of Finance Committee, he mentions Ten and Sixteen were being mostly forced by the state. Does that qualify under the state's new rules, so it's a simple majority vote as opposed to two-thirds?
No, this is, the town council is, is clearly, I recall his comments were Ten and Sixteen, I think he said Ten and Sixteen were a result of some state action, but town council has made it clear that this is a two-thirds vote on these articles, am I correct, Mr. Reich?
If I may, Mr. Moderator, Article Sixteen would be subject to simple majority, that's the accessory dwelling unit.
Correct, yeah.
Everything else would be.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Mr. Trudeau, just a point of information, I prefer on our zoning articles to have a two-thirds vote, because it, it's less than that, in my opinion, and I think Mark agrees with me, it does subject to, it to an easier challenge in court, should it be challenged. So I, I think we, we need to go with two-thirds, that's my opinion, and that's how I'm going to rule on this. Mr. Duchesne, any further, Mr. Cameron, do you have any comments you'd like to enlighten the body with? Crowley, Mr. Crowley, I'm sorry. Mr. Crowley, sorry, my apologies.
Thank you, Jim Crowley, Building Commissioner. Note to what Mr. Duchesne stated, the first four articles are basically rewrite of our zoning to clean up, and then the other two are on floodplain, which is protect the people of Walpole, and obviously, I'm guessing majority of people know the ADU that's coming from the state, is we need to make a vote on it, and we either, it's coming either way. If we vote yes on this, we give the town some protection, if we vote no on this, then we lose a lot of protection and we go with the state regs. But it is coming unfortunately, this is just to vote to protect ourselves more.
Okay, thank you, thank for that explanation. Okay, so Article Ten with, with regard to floodplain protection overlay districts, questions and comments with regard to Article Ten? Yes, sir?
Brad Hickey, Precinct Four, through you, Mr. Moderator. Just some clarification, if I could, on the portion of this that talks about recreational vehicles, as someone who has a camper in my yard, as well as many of my neighbors that I see, I'm just a little confused what the requirements are for the foundation for someone who's parking an RV or camper in their yard. This doesn't seem to delineate that, so if I could get some clarification on that.
Yeah, are we on, is this Article Ten, sir?
Yes.
Oh, it is, okay. Thank you. Who'd like to, Mr. Duchesne, would you like to, oh, Mr. Johnson?
I see this on the top of the, we don't have the pages numbered, but on the second page, recreational vehicle. This is the language as provided by FEMA. Mark just reminded me, we don't have a choice, so.
Mr. Reich, please.
Yes, through you, Mr. Moderator, this language is provided to the town by FEMA, and it's a requirement, it, it allows the town to come into compliance in order for homeowners to obtain floodplain insurance. So it's not language that, in fact, almost every municipality is voting on the same, the same language during this town meeting season, and this is, this is standard language, we don't really have a choice to deviate from that.
Sure. Through you, Mr. Moderator.
Certainly.
In, in, I guess, the pages aren't numbered here, but as we get towards the last page of the Article Ten language, it says, specifically, the recreation vehicles to be placed in a site must be elevated and anchored in accordance with the zone's regulations for foundation and elevation requirements. Where are those? What, what are the foundation and elevation requirements for parking a vehicle on your property? I'm just, I just, it's fine if they exist somewhere and we have to know them, but I don't see them.
Mr. Cameron. Crowley, 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 geez. Boy, oh boy, I'm sorry.
Don't worry, I've been called a lot.
I know you're the man from temporary, but I didn't know.
I've been called a lot worse.
Yeah, I know you have been. Sorry, Mr. Crowley, my apologies.
Mr. Moderator, so basically, the foundation is through the FEMA regulation, again, they're state regulations, and we have our owning bylaws for RV vehicles, but this is if your property is in a FEMA wetlands, which we do have some small areas, and you do intend putting an RV, then that would be a concrete pad that is either a four-inch thick slab that's poured for the size of the vehicle with anchor points around it, so you can tie down the vehicle. FEMA put this in there, this is clarifying from wet areas plus through anywhere that's got hurricane tornadoes, so it incorporates a lot of areas, not just a wetlands area. So that's where the anchorage comes in, so it won't affect Walpole that much, but small areas.
I appreciate that, and through you, Mr. Moderator, just one last question, and, you know, of course, I'll remember every word he said, but, but where does it say that? That's my question. It says it has to be in accordance with the zone's regulations, but how are people supposed to know what the zone's regulations are? It can't be just what someone says, it has to be written down somewhere.
Mr. Johnson?
Again, Brad, I just, thank you for pointing this out. I just Googled FEMA floodplain zoning requirements. It's, it's specified on the, on their website where those are, and I can dig down a little bit deeper, but it's specified in their rules and regulations.
Okay, I, I don't know if we can clarify this in, in this amendment, you know, but I think it can't just go uncalled for, so.
Thank you, thank you, sir. Further questions and comments with regard to Article Ten? Mr. O'Connell?
Thanks for the moderator, Bill O'Connell, Precinct Four. Just through you and, and possibly for Patrick and Jim, and you guys may have answered it at FinCom, but just with respect to the floodplain overlay district, how will that affect, or did you do a study, or is there any information for folks that may be refin or selling, will this potentially affect some folks who aren't, whose properties aren't in a flood zone? These FEMA maps, are they, are they basically going to potentially increase the number of, of property owners that may be subject to flood insurance? I don't know if, if you have that information handy, or whether you've looked at it, but that would obviously be a concern for many property owners.
Certainly. Patrick?
So, in terms of the maps themselves, I've looked at the draft form, and I can't really speak to every aspect of, of where the changes were, but in terms of the zoning and why we have to bring it forward is essentially by not being in compliance, the town, anyone that was impacted by flooding or has to file for flood insurance would no longer be protected under the National Flood Insurance Program. So, this process kind of really started off by a representative from the Massachusetts Department of Conservation Recreation reaching out to me, notifying us that we were one of the towns applicable to this, and that we would need to change our zoning. So, I really just kind of worked through the state, they provided their own model of the bylaw, and we took a look at our bylaw, and that's kind of how the process worked for this, it was really dictated by what the state language needed to be in order to meet compliance with the federal regulations.
Thank you, Patrick. Did I answer your question, Mr. O'Connell?
It does, thank you, Mr. Moderator, and I guess just through, through you again, Mr. Moderator, for town council, this isn't mandated, right? This is not something that the town has to do?
Through you, Mr. Moderator.
Yes, certainly.
It's not, it's not a mandate, but if the town fails to do it, as, as just explained, individuals will, will lose the ability to obtain the necessary insurance, so it is, it, it is a highly recommended, and as I said earlier, it's, it's being considered by municipalities across the Commonwealth. Every time there's a change in the FEMA regulations and the requirements, municipalities have to, have to fall in line with that, otherwise, property owners are at risk of not being able to obtain the insurance protection.
And again, through you, Mr. Moderator, if I may, through town council, so basically, is, is a lender looking at the specific town, what's, what the town has implemented through FEMA, or is it just a general FEMA map, if you know?
I can't speak to what a, what a lender would look at, but I, I believe that not being able to obtain this insurance would certainly impact the ability to get a mortgage on that property, because that affects valuations, there, there are a number of factors. So this, this would, failure to, to approve this would be detrimental to those property owners who would fall within, within the mapped areas. Be significantly detrimental.
Thank you, appreciate it. And thank you, Mr. Moderator, and if I may, just on the, just the general Articles Ten through Fifteen, just procedurally, I guess, I'm just trying to envision, once the amendments are made, they're voted on tonight, you're going to be making further amendments at, at another town meeting, or, because I guess my concern, Mr. Moderator, is that how is the book going to change? How's the zoning book going to change? Are we going to have half the articles that are now amended and implemented? Is it, is it going to be a new book? Is it going to be online? So it's just, it could, I'm just wondering if it's going to be a little unwieldy for the, the local boards.
Yeah, certainly.
So, thank you.
Mr. Crowley, can you address that, or Pat, can you address that?
It's dropping my stuff everywhere. Yeah, so it's a good question, and it's one that we factored in when the Steering Committee first met and working through town council. I, I guess there's really two, you know, trains of thought with it, you could propose one singular bylaw amendment, which would be trying to review 200 pages, or we could try to bring forward portions in more of a phased approach. And so the recommendation from town council is, is going forward in a more phased approach, it's, it's probably easier to digest for, for town meeting, as well as to really pay a lot of time to each section individually. So, nothing that's going to be changed is going to impact like formatting or misconnect with a, a different section. It's, it's, it's by and large, the formatting changes overall, and by formatting, I mean like numbering or anything like that, that would be something you do at the end. So, something that would be more comprehensive for the bylaw, like infecting everything, would be a change you implement at the end, whereas the phases we're bringing forward right now should not have an impact on anything dealing with any of the regulatory boards.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. O'Connell. Mr. Forsberg?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Forsberg, Precinct Seven, also a member of the zoning Steering Committee. I just want to make a point in regards to the gentleman that just spoke about the recreation Town council had recommended that us not put a lot of this language in, that we refer to mass general laws, because if mass general laws change, then we would have to come back to a, for a zoning change in the town book. So to make it easier, and for us not having to come back to the body for every change in a mass general law, it was suggested to us, and that's why we've gone to this. So, I know it's a little confusing, and you probably need a number of books to look all of this stuff up, but it makes it much easier for the town to conform with the mass general laws.
Thank you, Mr. Forsberg, and I see that our council was nodding in affirmance with that, so that's good. Okay, other questions and comments with regard to Article Ten? There being none. This requires a two-thirds vote, all those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed? One opposition, it is a two-thirds vote. Article Eleven, has moved the town vote to amend the zoning bylaws, Section One, general provisions deleting in section its entirety and place a new general provisions as printed in the warrant. A vote of the Finance Committee, please, Mr. Shea?
Finance Committee voted favorable action 10-0-4.
The Select Board, Mr. O'Neil?
Select Board voted favorable action 5-0-0.
The Planning Board, Mr. O'Leary?
The Planning Board voted 4-0-1, abstained.
Thank you, Mr. O'Leary. Mr. Leary, do you wish to comment on this?
This article here is looking at the first chapter of the existing bylaws. It's basically just cleaning up the language, and in some cases, making a reference to a state law rather than spelling out the state law in total. So, in the long run, it's going to shorten the book, because we aren't going to be repeating the state law again, just referencing it to show the person with the question where to go and seek the answer.
Thank you, Mr. O'Leary, and again, our council is, is nodding in affirmance, so thank you. Questions and comments with regard to Article Eleven? Yes? Ms. McNamara?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Leary. Questions and comments? Ms. Katie?
Katie Turco Beatty, Precinct Three, I'm also a member of Planning Board. So, I was one of the votes that abstained on this, and my reasoning was I had a problem with the CBD section. It proposed to remove the wording to provide a center for municipal and cultural activities and to act as a landmark and symbol of the town. Pat was really good, and he explained that he just felt the wording wasn't clear. I've been sitting on Planning Board for almost eight years now, and upon being seated, I quickly learned that we are a board tightly regulated by the zoning book. Our opinions are often deemed irrelevant. I also learned that it's not the Planning Board, the zoning board, or even the Select Board that shapes the town development, but... Board that shapes the town development, but town meeting. What I mean by that is, we as town meeting members determine what goes into the town bylaws. I feel that if we're going to make changes, we should not keep it broad or general. In some cases, we should not just echo the state wording, we should try to keep some identity. In my opinion, some of the buildings and development downtown that have been built, and are set to be developed, have helped us to lose our identity. It will continue as more development occurs. I looked at some of the towns around us, and they have been able to avoid this. In fact, I was flicking through cable this weekend and heard Walpole mentioned, but didn't recognize the speakers. I stopped and listened, and it was a surrounding towns candidates forum, where they actually cited what has gone on in Walpole, and that their hope was to learn from our pitfalls and avoid it from happening to them. Not really what you want to hear about your town. It was said that this language was being removed because it is not clear, it's general wording. I do not completely disagree, but I use the example of the old police station. I personally consider that could be referred to as a landmark symbol of the town. That's just one example. Pat mentioned we can address this when we get to Sections 5 and 6, when we modify them. I do not disagree with him. However, I suggest that for now, we do not vote in favor of removing this language. Leave this language in place so that there is something there until we find a better way to tweak that language in Sections 5 and 6. It's better to have something than a lapse with nothing at all. For those reasons, I am voting no.
Thank you. Other questions and comments with regard to Article 14? Mr. Damish?
Damish, Precinct 7, John, if you would, what was the overlay district you said was previously covered?
That would be the East Walpole parking district, which allowed the East Walpole Town Center, so to speak, to minimize the amount of parking they needed.
Thank you, Mr. O'Leary, Mr. Damish?
Very good, okay, a follow-up question, not related to that specific overlay. The solar overlay district, is that multiple places, or is it like one stretch of road or town forest, or what exactly is that solar overlay? Could you explain that?
Mr. O'Leary?
This is one that's recently been thrown in our face, actually. We currently have a solar overlay district, large solar, in front of us, and they've been told your bylaws don't matter, because the state says it can go anywhere it wants. So, it was designed, I believe, primarily to allow a large-scale district to be put in locations, and for us to respond to a request for it by expanding on the current allowed districts that allow it, to an area we found suitable for such a project. But now, we hear the state is saying, well, you can do this wherever you want, because your town bylaws say you can have a solar overlay everywhere. So, that's what I've learned at this point.
Thank you, Mr. O'Leary. Any further questions, Mr. Damish?
Sorry, no, just more like a general comment. If you've ever driven down 95, and you've come through Providence heading to Connecticut, there's like a two-mile swath of land, they took down a ton of trees, like literally two miles of trees, and they have a ground-based solar, I guess, overlay district. I just hope something like that doesn't come to our town someday, but it sounds like, from what John just said, we may not be able to stop it.
Thank you, Mr. Damish.
This is a comment, thank you.
Mr. O'Connell, and then Mr. Chekharowski.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Bill O'Connell, Precinct 4. Just, I guess, again, I'm going to echo my prior comment, just procedurally, it's just difficult to understand what is changing, and in the past, when zoning bylaws have been changed, the, you know, additions have been underlined and deletions have been struck through, so I'm assuming that most of these changes in 10 through 15 are not substantive, but, you know, what I'm hearing about this particular article is not the case. So, again, my concern is that these were changed, they were rewritten, but we don't have anything to compare it to, and in the past, we've always seen what potential, what proposed changes were being made, so.
Mr. O'Connell, as a point of information, this Article 14, as I read, this is entirely deleting the existing section and putting this in as a new section, just, you knew that, I assumed.
Right, right, but again, it just.
I see your point, your point is that, where's the old section?
And we're assuming there's no substantive changes, but I'm hearing that there are, so, that, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. O'Connell. Mr. Duchesne, do you want to address that issue? I see your hand go up, and then Mr. Chekharowski would be nice.
So, I think it was in the packets, within the description of the zoning articles, did include a QR code to find where we have marked up versions of all the articles on the zoning bylaw review committee's, I guess, webpage, if you want to call it. So, I understand Mr. O'Connell's point as well, just, I think it was from a point of having it be readable, but also did want to note that in the meeting packet, we do reference, where you can find the marked up versions.
Thank you. Mr. Chekharowski?
Yeah, Philip Chekharowski, a member of the Planning Board, also a member of the zoning rewrite committee, steering committee, and also Precinct 7. I just wanted to clarify one thing, the state overriding us as far as what we can do with solar, because we, that is, it's part of the Dover Amendment by right, they did grant that you could have a ground-mounted solar farm anywhere in your town. However, we do have in our bylaws, Section 13, which specifies very, or Section 14, I think it is, which does specify the site plan regulations, dimensional regulations about solar, ground-mounted solar farms. So, there are constraints that we have in our bylaws that any developer was to have to follow. Whether you agree with the Dover Amendment or not is a different question, because that is the state law now, and we're obliged to do that. And then I just also want to speak on this particular article, you know, again, most of the articles were not substantive changes, even though there may be a couple of small things that you might, you might want to wonder about only because of the changing of the language. But what we were trying to do on the committee, and again, we were being guided by Town Council, and also by Patrick and Jim, you know, cleaning up language, so there were a lot of things that were sometimes ambiguous, and the effort was to clean that up, and also reorganize things. But in, as far as we know, the substance is pretty well the same, you know, and again, you may, you know, I know Katie had questions with the language on the central business district, and, you know, there was no intent to leave out historic buildings. I think, I think some of the, one of the challenges in bylaws is that whenever you have anything that's a more general description of something, and you can't avoid that, then it's always going to be subject to some interpretation, so.
Thank you, Mr. Chekharowski, thank you. Further questions and comments with regard to Article 14? Mr. O'Leary?
I just want to echo that Mr. Chekharowski's comments are all correct.
Thank you very much. Any other questions, comments, concerns? There being none. Article 14 requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed? It is a vote, it's a two-thirds vote. Article 15. Article 15, it is moved and regularly seconded that the town vote to amend the zoning bylaws, Section 7, sign regulations in Section 14, definitions by inserting the underlying text and deleting the strike-through text as printed in the town meeting warrant. So, to Mr. O'Connell's point, an excellent point as well, we have some comparison here, Mr. O'Connell, so you can see what it was and what they want to strike, what wants to be stricken, it's an excellent point. Article 15 is a zoning article, requires a two-thirds vote. Mr. Shea of the Finance Committee, please.
Finance Committee voted favorable action 10-04.
Mr. O'Neill, Select Board.
Select Board voted favorable action 5-00.
Mr. O'Leary, Planning Board.
Planning Board voted favorable action 5-00.
Thank you, Mr. O'Leary. Do you want to speak to this article, Mr. O'Leary? You don't have to if you don't want to, but you can.
Article 15 relates to our current Section 7, which regulates signs, whether it be signs on buildings, little political signs we're now seeing pop up everywhere in town. It shows, it clears up some of the terminology, and explains in more detail what we consider a particular type of sign, and which ones are allowed by right, and which ones you need to come and get a permit for. It's always been a section that's been kind of fuzzy as to how you interpret it, the wording is going, and hopefully, with the new wording, it'll make it easier to understand, and it spells out the sizes of some of the signs more distinctly.
Thank you, Mr. O'Leary. Questions and comments with regard to Article 15? There being none. Requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed? It is a unanimous vote. Our last article this evening is Article 16. Article 16 is regularly moved and seconded that the town vote to amend the zoning bylaws by reversing, revising, sorry, provisions applicable to the accessory dwelling units as set forth in the warrant to be consistent with Sections 7 and 8 of Chapter 150 of the Acts of 2024, the Massachusetts Supportable Homes Act. As it is amended under Chapter 40A, Sections 1A through 3, all of which are printed in the town meeting warrant. This is a zoning article. Mr. Shea, Finance Committee.
Finance Committee voted favorable action 9-14.
Mr. O'Neill, Select Board.
Select Board voted favorable action 5-00.
Mr. O'Leary, Planning Board.
Planning Board voted favorable action 4-1-0.
Mr. O'Leary, if you would, to speak to this issue, please.
This issue regards a new section we added, how long ago? About two years ago, roughly, a year and a half, two years ago, where the state allowed a new unit called an ADU, an accessory dwelling unit. They've now come back with some changes to their bylaws, so we're coming back to rewrite ours to be in co-compliance with them, and yet, put as many restrictions as we can reasonably expect the state to allow, to allow us to regulate the ADUs. The ADU is basically the allowance of a, up to a 900-square-foot standalone building, or in addition to a house, to be used and allow anyone to live within that section, not necessarily restricted to someone of a family relationship. So, we're trying to regulate how a standalone unit will be different than one built into the original dwelling, but it's something that the state has said, any residential district allowing one family homes, they can do this. So, we're basically trying to put as many of our own wishes into it to give as much leeway as we can to anyone applying for one. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Leary. Questions and comments with regard to?
Also, this is the one article that is just a majority vote.
Questions and comments with regard to Article 16? Yes, ma'am?
Hi, Sue Shockett, Precinct 8. I've got a question about this, and forgive me, because I didn't read further into the state law itself, but if anybody could answer, from the wording, it says that now the law, that the bylaw is being changed so that it does not need to be the main residence of the homeowner. Is that correct?
Yeah, Mr. Crowley, can you answer this, right behind you? He's the Building Inspector, Zoning Enforcement Officer.
Through you, Mr. Moderator, yeah, the state changed the law twice since this article came into effect. You can have a single-family home with a standalone ADU, that the owner does not even have to live in either homes, and it is allowed by right.
Yeah. Mr. Reich, do you want to amplify this, please?
Yes, as the Building Inspector has indicated, the intent of the Affordable Housing Act was to, Affordable Homes Act was to encourage additional housing, including accessory dwelling units. So, initially, there was a requirement for owner occupancy, now the law allows for an attached or detached additional dwelling unit, an ADU, and there is no requirement that the owner be an occupant in either of those. So, that has been changed under the state law.
So, another question I have then to piggyback that, is there any requirement on the cost? Is there anything that requires it to be, I mean, if we're trying to push for affordable housing, are there any regulations set on what that means?
If I, I mean, Mr. Moderator, this is not dealing with affordability, these are accessory dwelling units, and this is not dealing with short-term rentals, if that's what you're thinking of, or other matters with respect to rental, this is strictly accessory dwelling units, does not get into issues of cost.
Right, so, all right, so I understand that, so when I'm reading this, in my head, this is a way that we're going to pack in additional housing into an area that I think most of us will agree is already overpacked. There are no guidelines about affordability at all, and who I'd see really making out well here is somebody who can afford to buy a multitude of properties, and rent them out, and cash in.
Mr. Crowley?
Yeah, through you, Mr. Moderator, we were at a meeting a few months ago with multiple other commissioners and towns, and one of them did send an article, we could send this early to the AG's office for approval, and tried to lock this out at 1,200 a month. And the AG came back, says you're not allowed to restrict on what you charge for these. And this is also, just so people know, again, this is an article that if we say no to it, is still allowed with no protection, or we agree to what protection we have here. This was actually put under Section 48, Section 3, at the state zoning, which is basically a part of the Dover Amendment, which means this thing is virtually bulletproof, it's very highly protected.
So, Mr. Reich, for a point of clarification for the body, am I understanding this correctly, that this is, that the state law is in place, and this is giving the town of Walpole some additional restrictions on that law? Am I correct in assuming that?
As the Building Inspector indicated, the bylaw allows a certain amount of regulation, which would otherwise not be in place, but would not, the law, state law would be in place, so ADUs would be allowable. The issue as to affordability, the town cannot regulate private business, so the town cannot specify a dollar amount for the rentals. And again, this is under a specific state statute dealing with accessory dwelling units, not dealing with affordable housing.
Well, right, but I recently read an article that stated that when you increase housing, the prices increase as well, so why aren't we pushing back on the state? I mean, the Dover Amendment is really changing the character of our town, and is there a means that we have to join with some other towns to try to say no to the new regulations about ADUs?
I think, Mr. Moderator, that's probably outside the scope of what we're discussing right now, but I do know, you know, that this issue has come up with respect to MBTA zoning, there was the recent Milton case, which found that statute, that regulation, regulatory process to be constitutional and within the realm of authority of the state legislature. I think you'd find that the courts would rule similarly on this amendment to the zoning act. So, that's very much an uphill battle, and one that the town of Milton lost.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Understanding the point.
Mr. Hickey?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Just a point of clarification, if these ADUs are built, do they count towards the denominator in the calculation of the 10% threshold for the Affordable Housing 40B restrictions?
Mr. Reich, or Mr., I'm sorry, Mr. Crowley, Mr. Crowley?
Through you, Mr. Moderator, these actually just count as a, even though it's called an ADU, it still counts as our housing, so it can take us out, if we are in safe harbor, they can take us out of safe harbor.
So, just to clarify, if there's a single-family house who builds an ADU, that now counts as two?
Correct. Correct.
Correct. And it's not under the affordable, it's not under the affordable housing. It's not going to go to use 10%.
Right, so we have no way to combat that.
Correct.
I appreciate the building inspector's comments. Again, these are housing units. They're not affordable housing units.
Okay.
By definition.
Mrs. Chikarowski?
Yeah, Philip Sharavravski for Precinct 7. Just want to say a couple of things. First, what the state is trying to do is address the fact that we have a housing shortage in Massachusetts. We're short over 220,000 units, and that's why houses are so expensive. I mean, certainly, anybody looks at the average price of a house in Walpole, and if you look at your children, you know, can they really afford to buy a house in Walpole? So the state cannot go and mandate house prices, as has been stated. What the state can do, though, is try to increase the housing supply. So the push is if the state increases this housing supply, then that will push down prices. Now, I highly recommend people, the town meeting members, look online. The state just issued a report, A Home for Everyone, where they walk through in great detail some of the things the state is doing and some of the things that we need to do, and also what are the factors that are increasing house prices. Now, we may not agree with everything in the ADU law, but it is a method that's actually been very successful in many states. And one of the, and so, one of the things it does is for elders, is it allows an elder to maybe sell their house and move in with a child, a family member, in an ADU. So that can actually help a lot of families. It also can provide a rental for an elder or for someone. Now, certainly, developers can take advantage of it, and we'll see how that goes. But also know that, as I said, there are many states that have done this, and it's been very successful in increasing housing. Now, one of the things that we did in our, by the way, as I mentioned, I was also on the zoning bylaw steering committee. So one thing that we did is we put in that any, I think it was only for detached units has to go for, I'm sorry, a limited site plan review, which goes to the zoning, first goes to the building inspector. So that gives some control over the, you know, the process that, there's a review of the location and the size of the ADU. And again, the ADU, the size is actually limited by law, by, it can't be more than half the primary house, or up to 900 feet. So I recommend that this board vote, this body vote for this. We're required to do it. The way it's structured, it does give our town some protection, and I think we, as a town, need to look at what are we doing in order to also facilitate more housing in a way that might be more friendly to the town? Now, a lot of people say, well, how did those big units, apartment buildings, get built downtown Walpole, and there's no affordable units there? And one reason is because Walpole needed to make action years ago and try to pass inclusionary zoning bylaws, and then we would have had some affordable housing in those apartments. So I think going forward, we really need to look and see, you know, what can we do to promote growth, still try to keep the character of Walpole, but know there's going to have to be some changes, because when we all moved to Walpole, Walpole, you know, at one point was a farming community. So farmers might have looked out and said, why is there a development? Well, I used to have fields out there. You know, that's just part of growth. So I really want to appeal also to us looking ourselves, you know, what can we do proactively so we have more control and not let, you know, not wait for the state to mandate things? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chikarowski. Mr. O'Neal?
I just want to make sure that we kind of cut through some of the chaff here and get to the point, which is, we have a law on the books today for ADUs, done. The state has superseded that law as of February 2nd, which, by the way, is also Groundhog Day. That's also done. If we don't accept the language that's in front of us tonight, the limited restrictions that this language affords us will not go into place, we will be governed by the state law, period.
Thank you, Mr. O'Neal. Mr. Forsberg?
Forsberg, Precinct 7. I just want to make another little statement that an ADU is a matter of right, so we don't, we cannot refuse this as long as we go by the guidelines. The state restricted us in a lot of requirements, and we really had our hands tied when we went over all of this language. But I did say in the statement last spring that, you know, how far is the state going to go? I feel as though all of the towns were losing our identity, any control over our local zoning. The state has really stepped in and done a number of things to take it away, and I think the last thing I said, what is next? What is the legislature going to do to us next? And here we are, a year later, and it's the ADUs, and it's the solar farms that we don't have control of. That's now, you know, a matter of right in the Dover Act. So I'm thinking, really, what is next? I mean, we have no control. So right now with the ADUs, there's no such thing as a single-family residential lot in Walpole anymore. Everything is now at least a two-family. And, you know, there's a lot of people that live in some prime properties, and, you know, you're paying, you know, you're paying for this location, and you're having a nice lot, and then all of a sudden, you're going to have a two-family sit next to you, and especially not being owner-occupied. In my experience, you know what, if it's not owner-occupied, the properties aren't taken care of as well, and that's one of the things I really disagreed with on this ADU, is it didn't have to be owner-occupied. So I'm going to say it again this spring, what's next? And I think we have to go against our legislators, and I think you were right when you said the town should be getting together and stand up to the legislators, and that's about it.
Thank you, Mr. Forsberg. And Mr. Forsberg and I did work on Marguerite's farm when it was still a farm, so. Doing, yeah, it is. It is, you've got it, John. Yes, Ms. Khatib.
Sarah Khatib, Precinct 8. I was also on the bylaw review steering committee. This is a good bylaw. It really is. I was on the planning board when we first passed the ADU, and in discussions with FinCom and other residents, we, there were several people that wished we could have been more moderate and allowed other things, like allowed someone to live in the ADU that wasn't related, allowed someone to rent it, allowed, you know, there are some things that we wanted that weren't allowed. Then the state came in and said, you kind of have to allow it. So we did our best. We, there were, you know, interesting discussions among committee members, different various opinions, but in the end, I really think it's a good bylaw. It does give protection to the town, to the residents. There's a review process for detached, where a resident would have to go through the building commissioner. It's not, you know, free range. There is a process, it's review, and if you look historically, there hasn't been a big influx of ADUs, and I wouldn't expect this to, you know, open the floodgates. It's a very, it's a zoning change that allows for very gentle density, which I think this town could appreciate. It provides more housing for people who really need housing. People, you know, not everyone needs a big house. Maybe someone needs to be close to family members or wants to be close to, you know, a close personal friend. This bylaw allows for gentle density. It has been thoroughly reviewed, and I am strongly in favor of it, and I hope everyone will vote in favor.
Thank you. Further questions and comments? Mr. O'Connell?
I'm just going to echo Mr. Forsberg's comments. I guess my bigger concern is with respect to the town and all municipalities in Massachusetts, losing, basically, we're losing home rule amendment. Single-family zoning is being eliminated. So I applaud the town, and I applaud Mr. Crowley and Patrick for getting out ahead of it and trying to restrict it, but this may be an opportunity for the, you know, not for the town to push back, but for this body. I'm going to urge that this body vote no. It's not like the MBTA Communities Act, where there was a stick, there was a carrot and a stick. Through you, Mr. Moderator, Town Council, there's no stick here. So is it fair to say that if we didn't approve this, someone came forward, tried to do an accessory dwelling unit, potentially a shed, right? It could be, what, up to a 900-square-foot shed? Doesn't have to be attached. I don't know if the rentals are defined here, short-term rentals are defined, but if we didn't approve it, if a developer came in, they'd have to file in Superior Court to overturn it. Is that right?
Mr. Reich?
If I may, again, I think the comments were made already, if we don't approve this, this provides some level.
No, I understand that. I understand that.
If I, if I, if this is approved, it allows certain level of regulation by the town. If you don't approve this, it's, the ADUs are going to be in place pursuant to the statute. So it's not a situation where the developer would have to go into court. So I guess I contrast it with the discussion we had.
Well, if I, I don't want to interrupt you, but what would be the process? Would the building inspector not have the opportunity to deny one?
Yeah. Yes.
Yeah, so it seems to me, Mr. O'Connell, that this is something, if you want restrictions placed on the state law, this enables it to do so.
This provides, yes, this provides some regulatory framework. There's the, and I think the building inspector, it seems like he's championing a bit to talk about this, but I think what he'll tell you is that you'll lose that regulatory opportunity.
I understand that. No, I don't envy the bill, I don't envy Mr. Crowley.
What I'm saying is, your comment about them having to go to Superior Court, no, they would get what they want.
So through you, Mr. Moderator, I guess the question for Jim is, with respect to minimum, a minimum potential shed, is there any minimum? I see a 900-square-foot maximum, or I guess the lesser of 900 square foot, and potentially whatever the existing dwelling is, but. Thank you.
Mr. Crowley?
To you, Mr. Moderator, to answer the last part, the two sizes are a maximum 900 square feet are 50% of the living area of the main dwelling. So if you have a home right now that's 1,000 square feet, you can only do a 500-square-foot ADU, but the max you can go up to is 900, so even if you're in a 10,000-square-foot mansion, you can't go any bigger than 900 square feet. And as to the point of voting on it, again, the criteria is if we vote no, it means I can, if someone comes into my department and asks for an ADU, I have to issue it to them, even if they vote, if everybody here votes no. If you vote no, I can put an ADU right against my neighbor's property line. I can put an ADU right on the street. There's no restrictions, there's no worrying about, what we are putting in our zoning right now is if we vote yes to get this in. We do limit setbacks, which are reasonable restrictions, so the setbacks of your zoning. So if you're in, say, a rural area, a standard house needs 25 feet. The ADU will need that. You will need a driveway. Limited site plan is approved, where we go with, it's not just me, it's also the department heads, engineering, DPW, fire, police, we all review this, so if you bring it, again, you're going to be having a car there with an ADU, you can't shine your lights completely on your neighbor. We can put in a buffer, we can put in a fence to kind of privatize it. If we vote no, all that goes away.
Okay. Mr. Reich, do you have a comment?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Moderator, through you. I was just going to comment, picking up on the building inspector's comment. These are, this, these are the kind of allowable restrictions under the Dover Amendment, so what you're imposing are those restrictions through this, as the building inspector already said. Otherwise, they're gone, and you will have simply ADUs as of right without any limitation.
Mr. Reich, as a point of information for the body, has a similar statute been passed in other towns that has been challenged? Are you aware of that?
Has a similar bylaw been?
Similar bylaws, sorry.
No, I'm not aware of any challenge that has been brought. I know that the Attorney General is watching all of these procedures very closely, obviously MBTA zoning in particular because of the sticks.
So in your opinion, this, the scope of this article is reasonable in its definition?
We worked with the town, we reviewed this. Yes, we were very comfortable.
Finally, Mr. Moderator, through you, and maybe to Jim, just with respect to the short-term rentals, is there a definition? Or is there?
Yes, there is a definition under Mass law. It's also backed up by, actually, the tax law as well in the state. I believe it's RE 109 R20, where it states anything under 31 consecutive days is considered a short-term rental. We don't allow them in this town. We put that in our zoning. Obviously, down the Cape, they're more into short-term rentals, and there's new criteria for that as well, but right now, we are not allowing short-term rentals in the town.
Thank you.
If I may, Mr. Moderator, this, again, this bylaw does not address short-term rentals. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Connell.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Town Council. Jim, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Connell.
Thank you.
Ms. Lawson?
Lawson, Precinct 2, call a question.
She wants to move the question. Thank you. We'll move the question. I just, as a point of order, I just want to thank you all for attending this evening, and I want to also thank you for the very considered discussion that we've had during the course of the evening. It's been a pleasure to be moderator here at the town of Walpole. And I also want to, before we take this vote, leave it to Ms. Hogan to make the motion to dissolve the meeting, given her 45 years of service to the town of Walpole. We're going to miss you very much, Jean. We're going to miss you. So, you're welcome, you're welcome. So this, we need a, we need a, what's before the body is moving the question, that requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor of moving the question, please say aye. All those opposed? It is unanimous. What's before you now is Article 16. This can be a simple majority vote. I'm going to ask for a two-thirds vote, and I'll declare it as such if we do have it. I'm sorry. Point of order? Don't worry about it, Phil. You'll get it. I can read the room. I can read the room, Phil. Although, requires a, requires a majority vote, and I'll take a vote. All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed? It is a unanimous, oh, sorry, it is a two-thirds vote. Thank you. Entertainer motion from Ms. Hogan to dissolve the meeting. And second, my buddy up the bed, go to make the motion, please, Jean. I know. Motion to dissolve the meeting. Second, all those in favor, please say aye. Opposed? It is a vote. Thank you, everybody.